Mr. Chairman, I would offer a motion that we approve the amended agenda as presented, sir.
Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, is the electronic voting board ready?
All right, now you gotta make a motion again, man.
Our boards aren't clear.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for each and every one that's here tonight. Pray you'll watch over us, lead, guide, and direct us in each and everything we say and do. Lord, also thank you to watch and over Joe Chambers in the hospital. Pray you help him and everything go good for him and bring him back home. And Jennifer Lyons' mom is in the hospital and they're working on her today, so hope that everything will go good for her too, and she'll come back home. Also, watch it for us tonight. Help us to help this county to get brought on and do things the right way. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would offer a motion that we approve the amended agenda as presented, sir.
Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, is the electronic voting board ready?
All right, now you gotta make a motion again, man.
Our boards aren't clear. Hand vote.
We have a motion by Supervisor Miles and a second by Supervisor Matthews. How do you feel? Raise your hand. Yes. Six of six. Approval of the minutes?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
A second.
All those in favor say aye with your up lifted hand. Approval of the claims?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Miles, seconded by Supervisor Bryant. All in favor, raise your hand. Six of six. Announcements? There are none? We'll move on to presentations. Mr. Gillum?
If your family or Mr. Forture would like to come up to the podium. So first of all, we're here tonight to honor Mr. Forture and his family by giving a resolution to everyone here tonight. This is one of the largest crowds that I've seen, actually, not only from the church that Mr. Forture attended, but his friends and neighbors in the community. So when I ask while I read this, if you're from the church or here tonight for Mr. Forture, you stand with us if you would, please. I think you'll see this is one of the largest groups for a resolution in a long time. David Franklin Forture departed this life on Saturday, September 30th, 2023, at the age of 79. Whereas David Franklin Forture was born March 18th of 1944. David Franklin Forture was the son of the late J. Rosser, Mary Jamison Forture. David Franklin Forture is preceded in death by his wife, Carol E. Forture, Brother James John Forture, Pearl Forture, and Nancy LaSue. Since we gave this resolution, Mr. Forture also lost his sister. Her name was May. Family has had a lot of hardships in the last couple of months. David Franklin Forture is survived by his daughters, Lisa Bailey, his husband Jeff, Kim LaSue, brother Henry Forture, four sisters. Three as of now, Elsie St. John, Mary Garrett, and Betty Forture. Brother-in-law Donald Reilly, Hannah, grandchildren Josh Bailey and Jamie, Daniel LaSue, Scott, William and Eric, Clara LaSue, and a special Bell Road Angel Kathy, sis Midkiff, and many friends. Whereas David Franklin Forture retired from Colonial Pipeline as an inspection supervisor after 36 years. David Franklin Forture was an active member of First Baptist Church of Dillon, where he served as a deacon, a choir member, numerous committees. He was a lifetime member of Dillon Fire Department and former member of Dillon Rescue Squad. Whereas David Franklin Forture was known for telling long, detailed stories, laughter, playing cards, music, and last but not least golf. David Franklin Forture was loved and respected by all who knew him and were greatly missed. Oh, I just want to let you know, I don't know of a finer man in Buckingham than David Forture. And not only the county of Buckingham, but the town of Dillon and Bell Road lost one of the best people in the country. My bless y'all.
All right, now we have a presentation for Michael Lewis Hudgens. Mike Hudgens, or Rock as we called him. I like, we got three fire department members coming up tonight. Is any of his family here?
As me. This is a resolution and memorandum for Michael Lewis Mike Hudgens. Whereas Michael Lewis Mike Hudgens departed this life on Monday, August 24th, at the age of 69. Whereas Michael Lewis Mike Hudgens was born on January 18th, 1951, here in Buckingham County, Virginia. Whereas Mike Lewis Mike Hudgens was the son of the late James Lewis and Lucille Christian Hudgens. Whereas Mike Hudgens, um, excuse me, whereas Michael Lewis Mike Hudgens employed, was employed with the Virginia Department of Transportation at the Dillon Headquarters residency for 44 years. Whereas Michael Lewis Mike Hudgens was a lifelong member, deacon, and usher at Mount Zion Baptist Church in New Canton. Whereas Michael Lewis Mike Hudgens loved hunting with the Hard Luck Hunt Club, NASCAR, and Friday Night Football game, and owned to the Arvonia Volunteer Fire Department Station as well as purchased new equipment.
All right, we'll have a presentation from Jamie Schumacher now.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, board members. I'm here tonight to let you guys know that the county was the recipient of the Commonwealth Technology Awards for 2023 for local government. This award was advertised for all local governments that could apply, and so we won the award for the solid waste management sites. Want to make you guys aware that Mr. Miles, we can thank for this because Mr. Miles actually encouraged us to apply for these awards through VACO and through the different entities, and we won this year's on the local government. So the big thing that they liked about the way you guys handled the solid waste management was the RFID stickers, the county stickers and the RFID management, and the fact that we were able to produce and do all of this stuff in-house. So congratulations, and the award is here. We'll, we'll leave it with Mr. Carter, and he can see that it goes in the right spot.
Thank you, Mr. Schumacher.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I think the staff needs to be commended for this award. It's, I mean, we're up here making policy decisions, but it's you, Jamie, and it's you, Carl, and it's Lynn Hill, and it's the county team who really literally runs wires at night and fixes the arm when people decide to run through it. Don't run through the arm because they have to get up at night to fix the arm, so, and of course, the entire solid waste staff, so the recognition goes to the staff.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll have Kristen Choak from Robinson Farmer and Cox and Associates.
Good evening, everyone. As promised last month at the board meeting, we are back this month to give you the results of the FY22 audit, which finally has been completed. I don't know if, are you pulling that up or? So you should have the audit report in front of you as well as the communication that we issued as a result of that audit. And I prepared a presentation just to briefly summarize the audit engagement. So we were engaged to perform a financial statement and compliance audit for the county for fiscal year into '22. That audit was subject to auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, specifications for audits of county cities and towns issued by the auditor of public accounts, standards for financial audits contained in government auditing standards, also known as the Yellow Book, the Single Audit Act, and provisions of uniform guidance that cover federal awards. We did perform our audit under all of those standards. There was one new implementation, GASB implementation this year. GASB number 87 regarding leases, and we'll go over a couple of the changes that that resulted in in the financial statements. There are significant accounting estimates that are used in preparing the financial statements. Those impact things such as depreciation, estimating the lives of the capital assets such as buildings, vehicles, various equipment that's in use throughout the county. This year, because of the GASB 87 implementation, we had to use the incremental borrowing rate for valuing the leases. The allowance for uncollectible property taxes, compensated absences or accrued leave, and then net pension and OPEB items are also subject to estimates. So we reviewed all of those estimates, and we found those to be reasonable. There are not any significant difficulties or disagreements in dealing with management during the course of the audit. We did have several audit adjustments that we proposed to management, and I have discussed those with Carl and Kevin, and those adjustments have been made, and they've been reviewed and evaluated for potential impact on the fiscal year '23 financial statements. We obtained the required representations. There were no other, no consultations with other accountants about auditing or accounting matters. As far as the different parts of the financial statements, the required supplementary information, which is management's discussion and analysis, kind of a summary of the changes, you can see a comparison between fiscal year '21 and '22, and the schedules related to pension and OPEB funding. We do apply certain limited procedures to those, reviewing them to make sure they're reasonable. The budgetary comparison information, which are your schedules one and two, and various other budget schedules throughout the report are reviewed in relation to the basic financial statements, and those are found to be reasonably stated in comparison to those. As far as the other supplementary information, combining an individual fund statements and schedules, those are your ARPA and EMS schedules. The schedules one and two, and then the CIFA, those are reviewed also, and we issue an opinion in relation to the financial statements on those. The statistical information, we do review that, make sure there's, there's no inconsistencies, and that it is reasonably stated in accordance with the financial statements, and then also what we gather during our audit procedures to make sure that that is also reasonably accurate. So we did express unmodified opinions on each of those statements, the financial statements themselves stating that they are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and then the internal controls and the compliance. Also, as a required in the auditor specifications from the APA, we are required to report on VRS attestation, and that is for both the school board and the county VRS reporting, and everything there was fairly stated in all material respects, and there were no issues reported. To summarize some of the information from the financial statements, the general fund decreased from $13.054 million to $12.694 million. No changes in the County Capital Improvements Fund. The CARES Act Fund, the remaining funds that were on hand, 389,678 were spent during fiscal year '22, so there were none of those remaining to carry forward to '23. year 22, so there were none of those remaining to carry forward to 23. The EMS fund decreased from 1 million dollars to 263,000 dollars. If you'll recall, there was a 1.5 million dollar grant from Dominion in fiscal year 21 that really drove up that fund balance there. So now you're seeing kind of what it's going to cost to operate that fund, and you have more details on that in the financial statements. The ARPA fund shows no fund balance, is very similar to the CARES Act fund. You don't recognize that as revenue until you start spending it. So at the end of fiscal year 22, there was 1.6 million dollars in unspent funds. And then shortly after fiscal year 22, in July of 22, the remainder of that second half allocation was also received. So there's 3.3 million dollars to be spent during FY23. The water and sewer funds, the water fund decreased from 12.5 million dollars to 11.7 million, and sewer went from, increased from 6.3 to 6.9. And that is really reflecting the debt that was refinanced during fiscal year 22. There was outstanding loans for water and sewer that were refinanced and paid off with a, a debt issue that is in the water fund now. So that shifted half of that debt over to the water fund, which impacted the fund balance. But net overall change was minimal, about 100,000 dollars. The fund balance for the school board, of course, the school operating fund does not carry a fund balance. That's just trued up to zero at the end of the year, so you'll see inter-fund transfers and cash moving just to make sure that those revenues and expenses equal out. The school cafeteria fund increased from 272,000 to 509,000 dollars. And then school activity funds, if you remember last year, were pulled into the financial statements, and those increased from 238,000 dollars to 268,000 dollars. As I mentioned, there were, there was the new lease standard that everybody was talking about this year. If you'll go one more slide, I just showed the impact here of what that entailed. Now, as of fiscal year June 30, 22, there were 272,000 dollars worth of leases in the general fund and 267,000 in the water fund, and those are leases receivable. That is the health department lease that is due to the county, and you have to project that out how, over the life of the lease, and then a water tower lease, a tower lease in the water fund. Those, there are several other leases, like the county leases, the building to the Department of Social Services, but that's considered an inter-agency lease, so that's not reflected here because you would have to show the asset side and the liability side to yourself. So that, there are several things like that that do not come into the financial. So there are certainly other leases that the county does have and funds that they're receiving from a revenue perspective that you're not seeing in these balance sheet numbers. Those are offset by deferred inflows, so they really don't have a huge impact on your financial statements. Those have to be discounted at the present value, and that's where that incremental borrowing rate comes in. And then on the left seaside, so the county is also leasing some things from other parties. So they have leases on both sides, and those are equipment and tower leases, and those do not go in your fund statements, but you see those on the full accrual basis for the government-wide statements, very much like your capital assets, buildings and other types of assets. So there were 261,000 dollars worth of lease assets, and the liability on that was about 262,000 at the end of the year. We did have several recommendations in the management letter that we provided, just related to accruals and audit entries, reconciling state and federal revenues, budget appropriations, several other things that have been summarized here, but there are more detail in the documents you've been provided. As far as future accounting and reporting changes for fiscal year 23, there is a new statement, GASB 96, that is on subscription-based information technology arrangements or SPITAs. That will be very similar to the lease standard. It mirrors the accounting for that. So if there are any of those arrangements that qualify for reporting, you'll see those come on as assets and liabilities or deferred inflows. The, there are also a couple other ones that should not have as big of an impact, but statement number 100 just deals with accounting changes and error corrections and how you have to deal with those in your financial statements if they arise. And then compensated absences, which is still a couple years out on the horizon there, but it updates the recognition and measurement guidance for accrued leave, and it aligns that guidance under a unified model because there are several different things in play right now and some required disclosures that will go away in a couple of years. So those are the major ones on the horizon. The SPITA standard is a lot of time and effort for management to gather the contracts and review them, much like the leases. But we're finding a lot of those aren't actually coming on to the financial statements, so there may not be a significant impact, but they do have to be analyzed. And that does require a lot of time and effort to gather all those documents and communicate with all the departments. So just want to make sure that management is aware of that and taking care of that for the fiscal year 23 audit. And related to that, we are already in the process of working with management related to that for a more timely audit for fiscal year 23. We've already been in contact with the school board and started some procedures and some planning there, and also with social services. So, and then, like I said earlier, we are in communication with, Kevin and Carl have provided them all the audit schedules from the FY22 audit and the journal entries and are, you know, making sure they understand those and that they are properly handled. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to entertain them.
I have just one question, Mr. Chairman. When, when Ms. Choak, can we expect the fiscal year 23 audit?
Um, definitely before March. Right now, like I said, we, we are already in the field and starting those procedures, and it will somewhat be dependent on when the schedules that we need as far as accruals and things like that are provided to us by management. But we are, we're already digging in and have a plan laid out to make sure that that is very timely this year compared to last year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Nothing else?
Anybody else got any questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna have Emmett Lefsey from Architectural Partners on the courthouse renovation update.
Good evening.
As you know, the courthouse restoration rehabilitation project went forward about 18 months ago. It was an exterior-focused project, basically dealing with roof, brick masonry, windows, and the basement foundation wall, working to keep moisture outside of the building. As we moved through that process, we did testing on various elements of the building to identify the specific problems, and then worked up construction documents to put out to bid. Facilities, my engineering group and myself had a pre-proposal, a pre-bid conference, getting ready for contractors to start coming in and pulling their prices together. As a part of that, our, our engineering work focusing on the exterior, where windows were being repaired, we had identified about a foot around the window. If finishes on the interior were touched, they had to be repaired. Several contractors, in walking through the building with Daniel Queen, the engineering group and myself, started asking about those interior finishes. They were anxious about if that one-foot zone would then expand and need to go further out to the perimeter wall of each of those offices as construction happened. We started talking about that, knowing that if that situation arose during construction, we would be in a situation where we'd be looking at a change order with the contractor. Knowing that change orders during a construction period are historically more expensive than they are if they're in the base bid, we, we took a step back. Carl, Daniel Queen, my engineering group and myself had conversations, and we walked every office that was going to be touched on the first floor, every storage space on the basement level, and then the historic courtroom on the second floor, and looked at those spaces in detail in terms of the existing conditions of those interiors where we had not looked before from the exterior approach of the project. We identified those spaces and looked at what would have to be repaired. A good number of those rooms have modern drywall and furring over top of historic plaster, but also a good number of those rooms have historic plaster from the original building, particularly the historic courtroom, both walls and ceiling. So it was deemed that it would be better to take a step back, a pause on the construction documents, let the contractors step away, have the architectural engineering team update our drawings, create new drawings to address interior conditions now under a new expanded scope, and get those elements taken care of. We've already done exploratory holes in four locations. The big thing is the historic plaster. Every historic building has a little bit different makeup of that plaster by region, by building. So we want to make sure that when we're repairing interior plaster, that it goes back exactly to match what's there so that we don't get delamination happening in the future. So those two first steps have happened. We're ready to do testing on that plaster to get its makeup correct and then create those working drawings. We're a couple of weeks out, given approval to go forward, we'll get those drawings done and rebid the project with the, basically the same general contractors that we have in place for the first pre-bid. I'd be glad to answer any specific questions you might have on those steps and any steps going forward.
Does any supervisor have any questions?
Thank you, Emmett, because we all know when you're renovating a building, you never know what's behind the wall, so I think it's.
Yeah, I think the big thing is that doing it now will only interrupt those people. There are court staff on the first floor that occupy the building. We'll do it once as opposed to having to come back a second time under another budget cycle to take care of it. And then I think the big thing is the historic courtroom. You know, as Daniel Queen and I had the discussion, let's get it done one, this one time, and we can step away and have the building intact, both from an exterior standpoint, moisture, as well as from an interior standpoint down the road.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good day.
All right, we are opening up to a public comment. Everybody's got three minutes. How many we have signed up, Jamie?
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Chairman. We have seven signed up tonight. First speaker tonight is Kenda Honeman, followed by Michael Palmer.
In a conversation that Supervisor Bryant and I had, I mentioned Jacob Caricella, who had been suggested to be on the solar committee. And it appears that he is a lobbyist and an industry insider, and I don't think that everyone knows that. So I, I feel a lot of concern that we have someone like that on our committee. I don't know that that's appropriate. We see corporations keep coming back and asking for our land to make profit for themselves, and I just wonder how we're valuing our non-renewable resources here. We've got tremendous value, obviously, and to give it away seems like a tremendous loss. I, I hope you'll evaluate the cost benefit of these projects and consider the sustainability of our county land and natural resources when you're approving commercial projects. Moving too fast costs us. We know that recently we had $170,000 loss. I think we can learn before we make some decisions and take some actions. So other counties have been doing a lot of studies. I think we can learn from what they have discovered and chosen to do in, in their particular situations that are similar to ours. And DEQ has made some decisions, but they then end up being impacted by politics and the decision gets put off a few years. So I, I hope you'll consider that this is up to you, it's not up to outside forces to make these decisions for our county. I'm really happy to hear regarding the comp plan that the public has so much input. Originally, Todd Fortune said that he was used to getting about 100 responses. I hear that we got about 500. So I, I think that's really encouraging that the public is that engaged, and I hope that what has been offered in opinions will really be implemented here in our county. So I ask that you stop approving any new industrial-scale projects until you have a solid policy and a plan for our future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Palmer, followed by Ruth Aldrich.
Good evening, board members. Michael Palmer from District Three. I'd just like to say that I'm deeply humbled by being elected to serve District Three for the next four years on the board, and I'm looking forward to working with each one of you to try to look out for the citizens of Buckingham County and do the very best we can for all citizens of Buckingham County, on the county, until the new board can be initiated in, in January. And I'd also like to say, Mr. Matthews, I wish you well. I know you're going out at the end of the year, and also, Mr. Miles, you're going out at the end of the year also, and I wish you well as well. Thank you very much.
Ruth Aldrich, and then we'll have John Waltman.
I'm Ruth Olender Aldrich, District Six. Since I've had not any further communications from emails that I requested be recorded from a prior board meeting in regards to solar in the county, I'm here tonight to speak again and it be recorded about my continued concerns as a citizen to the Buckingham County, Virginia, and the future of solar farms. Solar that is truly an ever-increasing progress to solar industry for those that live in the heart of Virginia. As a citizen for over 20 years, I request that each of you, again, please pause to continue votes for more solar farms in Buckingham, Virginia. The citizens you serve within and beyond the James River, Chesapeake Bay watershed to north and south of Richmond, Virginia, will have potential harmful impacts, a huge footprint of not green in the future. Please pause for improved and current research to pull solar policies across the nation and the world that are focused on all issues such as water conservation, most importantly, fire EMS, emergency-level fire code response for hazardous materials containment, containment by our community volunteers who will take these calls, along with response to failed systems impacted by storms and other natural occurrences. Solar in Buckingham, Virginia, scheduled now at approximately 7,500 acres, that will be bigger than the city of Charlottesville, an acreage of 6,500 acreage. As well, recruit additional citizen members that live here to participate on the Buckingham County Solar Committee, along with solar lobbyists that is current. Please use a best pack practices approach moving forward to review drafted solar policy and approve with new DEQ regulations for storm water management, but other research avenues that are being conducted. Look back to why the name stake for this building, Peter Francisco, the meeting space name stake, responsible for the Commonwealth of Virginia, state law to maintain water quality along with soil erosion reduction while educating those who live within and beyond Buckingham County. As stated by President Roosevelt in the 1930s, "The nation that destroys its soil destroys itself." My viewpoint, as does a county. Additionally, anyone that stands to gain financially should excuse themselves from any voting decisions moving forward, whether on the Board of Supervisors and/or Planning Commission. Doing so and voting yes is truly Doing so and voting yes is truly unethical and not a reflection of the citizens that are called to serve when they're gaining financially. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Waltman, followed by James Redford.
Evening. You guys got your hands full, it seems like, and so it kind of gets to my point. My name is John Waltman, and I am the property manager at CNS Retreats located at 14585 South Constitution. Most of you, I believe that's District Six, most of you probably know it as Three Ponds. I'm requesting an addendum to tonight's agenda for the verbal approval or vote of the special use permit that we've been required to submit to the zoning department for construction of a metal building to be used to store and maintain our tractor and other property equipment. The special use permit has been an ongoing governmental burden that has spanned the better part of two years for various reasons that I cannot explain. It has delayed construction and caused much of our equipment to suffer exposure to the elements as it sits in a lot designated for the building. The building will have no public access, no entrances for outside of the property, and will not be seen by any of our neighboring properties. The original building permit was reviewed by all required branches of the county permitting office, but came to an abrupt stop for unknown zoning reasons. The building was intended, as intended, has zero commercial interest. The sole purpose of the building will be to house and maintain our property equipment. I request that the Board of Supervisors verbally or in a vote affirm the approval of our special use permit and forego the further delays that include the planning commission's review, dealing with holiday schedules, probable weather delays, and of course, in the end, coming right back here, taking up more important county time for your final approval of a construction that equates to a large metal shed. I have provided copy of the submitted special use permit to Mr. Chambers, and I have copies here for your review tonight if needed. Thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you.
Questions for me? Thank you.
James Redford, followed by Brian Bates.
All right, he's speaking for the Peter Francisco fire thing, so I'm gonna give him five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, board, my name is James Redford, and I live on the southern part of Buckingham County. I am representing Lower Francisco Fire Association tonight, and I know some change is coming to this board soon, so I wanted to be sure we could address this board in regards to action or lack thereof this board has taken earlier this year. Y'all may recognize my name from an email of which I sent earlier this year to County Administrator Mr. Carter. That email, which Mr. Carter asked me to send him, included a request to grant permission to Farmville Emergency Communications Center, Farmville ECC, allowing them to dispatch either Farmville or Prospect Fire Departments in New York County if their center received a 911 call and the caller being located inside Buckingham County and a fire response is needed from one of those agencies. Thus helping to reduce response times to citizens' emergencies, it would have only affected Farmville and Prospect Fire Departments respectively. I am the Assistant Chief of Prospect Volunteer Fire Department, but I am not here representing my fire department tonight. Question, can 10 minutes make a difference? On October 4th this year, approximately 7:06 a.m., Farmville Emergency Communications Center received a 911 call reporting motor vehicle accident at address 687 South James Madison Highway. The caller stated she just witnessed a bad accident happen, and it looked really bad. The 911 dispatcher asked more questions to confirm the location and quickly noticed it was inside Buckingham County. At 7:09, the current protocol, the 911 call, was then transferred to Buckingham Sheriff's Office Dispatch. When that dispatcher entered, then the caller had to answer some of the same questions over again by the Buckingham dispatcher to confirm the address, location, and details of the accident. At 7:10, Farmville Communications received a second 911 call providing more information of an unconscious driver of a solid waste truck and unknown entrapment. At 7:11 a.m., Buckingham Department of Emergency Services, along with Dillon Fire Department, were then dispatched. Shortly thereafter, the medic unit from the EMS, Medic 14, was responding. While responding, Medic 14 asked Buckingham Dispatch to please be sure Farmville Fire Department was added to the call since the incident was so close to the southern border near Prince Edward County line. At 7:14, Buckingham Dispatcher called back to Farmville Communications, making the request for fire EMS mutual aid. At 7:16, Farm Fire Department and Prince Edward Volunteer Rescue Squad were dispatched by the same dispatcher that took the initial call 10 minutes later, 10 minutes after the initial call was received. 7:17, Medic 14 from Prince Edward Rescue Squad responded. 7:18, Farmville 911 Center receives a third 911 call. 7:24, Farm Fire Department Squad One responds. This is their heavy technical rescue. At the same point, a fireman from Farmville had his personal vehicle on scene and provided an update of entrapment and unconscious driver in a solid waste truck. At 7:25, both Prince Edward Volunteer Rescue Squad and Medic 14 arrived on the scene. At this time, the medics on the scene attempted to provide full care to the male driver, but were unable to do so due to the entrapment. At 7:30, Farmville Fire Squad One arrives on scene and shortly after begins the extrication process. It would take approximately 21 minutes for this process. From what I'm told, all responding agencies worked very well together and got the job done and handled the incident professionally. Farmville 911 Center received a total of five 911 calls regarding an accident. All the callers were located in the southern part of Buckingham County. So can 10 minutes make a difference? You better believe it can. Had Farmville Communications been granted the permission to dispatch Farmville Fire Department immediately, instead of having to wait for a call back from Buckingham to specifically request Farmville Fire Department to respond, they would have, the Farm Fire Department would have been on scene five minutes prior to the medic units. Why is this important? Because the medics on scene would not have had to wait so long to provide medical care to the injured driver. It had been 10 minutes sooner for that driver to have been outside of that vehicle. 10 minutes sooner, that driver could have possibly been in an ambulance. 10 minutes sooner, that driver could have been at the hospital. This one call proves the importance of the letter that I mentioned earlier, the same letter that this board passed on and of which failed to take correct action. And granting permission, if granting permission just helps one person receive emergency response in a quicker timeframe, it's worth it. In my opinion, the board failed, the persons involved in this motor vehicle accident on October 4th. It is my hope and the hope of the Lower Francisco Fire Association that my speaking with you this evening will help prevent delays of this nature in the future. This costs $0 to the taxpayers of Buckingham County, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Redford.
Brian Bates, followed by James Smith.
Brian Bates, District Three. Good evening.
Good evening.
In March of last, of this year, this board asked the fire departments from Buckingham, along with Mr. Carter, Mr. Davis, Cody Davis, and Mr. Schumaker, to meet with representatives from John Randolph, Farmville, and Prospect. We did that. In April of this year, I came before this board and did a rather detailed 20 to 25-minute report on those discussions and where we thought things were working and where we thought there might be some room for improvement. The one area for improvement centered on brush fires, and we acted on that recommendation that came out of that group. The issue about which Mr. Redford is speaking doesn't have anything to do with the protocols that the Buckingham County Volunteer Fire Departments put in place in 2019. In fact, when Farmville Dispatch called Buckingham to pass the incident question on October 4th over to Buckingham, that dispatcher, and I'm not throwing anyone into the bus, but that dispatcher had the option to stay on the call while Buckingham took the information, and there could have been a handoff right there on the phone between those two dispatchers. That technology is absolutely possible today. Now, what Mr. Redford is really talking about is a regional 911 system, much akin to what you see in the metro Richmond area. Chesterfield has it, City of Richmond has it, they participate in it together with the other localities. Now, if you want to spend eight or $10 million, you can get that. I'm not quibbling about the time it takes to get someone to the scene. I've been doing this for 35 years. I know how important time is. But what I don't think is useful is to have things litigated like this in a board meeting when Mr. Redford had six weeks between that call now, or five weeks between that call now, to sit down with Mr. Carter, to bring in Mr. Davis from EMS, to bring in anyone from the fire department, and even your own committee, but he chose to litigate this in a public meeting. I don't think that that is appropriate. I don't think it does service to the issue that is at hand, which does need to be discussed, but I just don't think this was the proper form for it. And I am a member of the Buckingham County Volunteer Fire Department. I'm the chief of the Toga Fire Department and the president of the Buckingham County Fire Fighters Association. With all of that, I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm a private citizen. You're not. So if someone wants to make comments about me, my character, you better be darn certain you've got the facts, because if you don't, you're defaming me under Virginia law.
That goes two ways.
You're a public, you're a public figure as an elected official, sir.
I sure am.
Yep, for another 45 days.
And time does matter, and that 10 minutes does matter, and you should not have to call to get back into this county to provide a service for our citizens. Thank you. Mr. Bates. And we're not gonna be bickering and arguing in here.
No, sir, we're not. Thank you, sir, for your time.
James Smith, and he is our final one tonight, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman.
I'm here to talk about farming. Jamie Smith, Maysville, District Four. Being able to purchase from local sources provides resiliency to the food system.
Don't tell me to tell us.
Being able to produce locally provides the goods necessary for one to buy locally. Small business entrepreneurs need the freedom to produce on their property from their resources. Do you know who raised or grew your food? Who baked your bread? If you did, could you go to that farm, to that baker, see how it was raised, grown, how it was made? Or would you be met with razor wire, security cameras, and signs? When you buy that fresh food in the grocery store, are you sure it's fresh? Do you know the USDA guidance for poultry, I'm just using poultry because we do poultry, what they go by for fresh poultry? I can read it to you, from the USDA website. Pertaining to poultry, raw poultry parts, any edible portion thereof, internal temperature has never been below 26 degrees Fahrenheit. That's fresh. Further down, where it talks about, sorry, where it talks about never frozen, or similar verbiage, is not permitted on any unprocessed or processed poultry product where the internal temperature of the product has ever been below zero degrees Fahrenheit. That's never frozen. When you go to the grocery store and the poultry there is marked never frozen, just remember, never frozen means never below zero Fahrenheit. And since I have a minute 13 left, I want to encourage everybody to get out and go to Buckingham Events, where you can find fresh locally grown produce, products. We had, we have the market going on again, going on the, with the grocery auction on the first Friday of each month, and on the 2nd of December, we'll have the Historic Village, and there's gonna be a lot of local producers there. So there are opportunities in Buckingham for the citizens to get out and to get these things. Also, with my last 40 seconds, I'll say this. I spent 20 years in emergency medical services, 16 years at the Richmond Ambulance Authority. I don't have a dog in the local fight, because I've never served here, but we should be getting the closest slash fastest unit on scene every time, whenever possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, it'd be VDOT Road matters, Mr. Scott Frederick, Divisional Resident Engineer.
Evening, Chairman and Board. Thank you for having me tonight. Got a quick update for you. I met with Buckingham Branch Railroad yesterday, actually. It took us a little while to find a date on the calendar that worked for us, but the crossing on 669 Rocky Mount Road is kind of narrow. We've widened the road over years, over the years, and there's actually a little bit of a broken off edge right there near the tracks, but we're working with them, and we're gonna put a patch on that broken spot, but in the summer, they're gonna upgrade the whole crossing, and at that point, the crossing and the road will all be the same width. So there's good work coming there. Our three rural rustics that we're working on this year is Wildland Road, Blackwell Road, and Mill Road, and we've got a lot of the stone, base stone placed for those projects, but, and the brush cut and all the drainage work done, but the cold weather caught us, and we're not gonna be able to shoot the surfaces until springtime. We've been working on adding shoulder stone and dressing up the shoulders on Route 15. We started at Andersonville Road, and we're working south. We've got a lot of other shoulder work going on throughout the county. We've been really focused on shoulders, ditches, replacing drainage pipes, and removing trees that need to come down. We've been heavily focused on 636 right now. We've got a tree trimming contractor working on cutting the limbs way back to our, to the maximum width and height that we're allowed to cut. So that road will look a lot like 610 that we just recently completed earlier in the year. The other project that we've worked on recently on 636 Stagecoach Section is we're raising the grade of that road about three inches where there's a drainage pipe that kind, it frequently floods right there. We're thinking raising the grade will keep us from having to close the road whenever we get to summertime thunderstorms. Other than that, I don't have anything major to update you on from this month, but I could take comments from the board at this time.
Well, we're gonna go, any supervisors got anything from Mr. Frederick? We'll start with District Seven.
I know I mentioned it before, but I didn't know if you'd heard it. Allen Lake, then the current, where they put that another pipe through the road, it's got two little spots, it's, concrete's gone.
Yeah, after the last time I talked to you, I mentioned it to Walter Walker, the superintendent. I'll follow up with him and see if he's had a chance to look at that and get it addressed.
There's gravel in it now, but I didn't know, I didn't know if they put in more.
Yeah, I know they were, they were working on Thomas Road, and I think they were gonna work in that section as well, so I'll follow up and check with them.
Right, and then on 650, you know, where you fixed the part, I talked about it last time, about Wardland Road. I got told by somebody else that for the quarter mile the other way, on the old Tower Hill Road, you come over to Tower Hill Road, and you go toward, to the right for about a quarter mile, it's right there in front of where a man was building upon it, you can see it, and I was told that there was another big spot of water in the road, but since we hadn't had no rain for a while, I hadn't seen it.
Okay.
But, you know, that's something else to look at, and then I had, like you was just talking about, you was cutting the trees. I've had some bus drivers talk about the trees being hurt, and the kids be at the window and leaves and limbs hitting the kids, so anyway.
Okay.
But if y'all could, you know, start working on that sometime or another, it'd be nice.
Yes, sir.
Just another idea I thought I'd give you.
Carl, did Supervisor Chambers relay anything Road Matters for his district?
Not to, no, he did not put to.
Okay, we'll go to District Five.
Yeah, I talked about the Deer Crossing signs, you hear about them? We need a sign on Woodland Church Road at the intersection of Woodland Church and 601. One, we wrote 56 and, oh, no, Road, R U N A, Connor Road.
Okay, thank you.
Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Frederick, the only issue that I would bring up tonight is that I've been contacted by, by two folks who live on 60 west of the courthouse, so outside of the courthouse village, and they've got concerns of the heavy amount of traffic on, on about 60, right before you get to 56, because of the VDOT facility that's there now, and there's, and people speed in that curve like it's turn three at the Talladega 500. I mean, I'm guilty of it, too. So people need to slow down right there, first of all. Second of all, maybe look at lowering that speed limit right there for a little bit past ducks, just because of the in and out of the VDOT traffic, and it has off, it's, it's... ducks, just because of the in and out of the VDOT traffic, and it has off, it's, it's, it's added a whole lot of traffic there, and I'm glad the VDOT, the state shed, I call it stair, that's good, but it has increased a lot of traffic, and there's been some concerns from some folks who live right there on that stretch of sixty.
Okay.
So maybe, some sort of traffic calming?
Right, yeah, well, I'll get it reviewed, since that is a new commercial entrance there, but we recently did upgrade that whole intersection, add in turn lanes, so that should, not our driveway, but fifty-six and sixty.
Right, that's not the issue, the issue's not the intersection, the issue is the amount of traffic and the speed.
Right, okay, well, like I said, I'll get it reviewed, and if we need a sign for a commercial entrance, or something like that, we can do that.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
District Three?
Mr. Frederick, I spoke to you earlier about the red oak tree that's right at the mile marker, up close to Wise Ridge Store, and it's getting ready to fall on the road, so you're gonna take care of that.
Yes, sir.
That's the only issue I have right now.
Thank you.
District Two?
Oh, yes, some action going on Bell Road today.
Bell Road.
There's some paving going on, did y'all sub something made on Bell Road today?
I'd have to look into that, I know we've rented a paver ourselves, and we use it from time to time.
Now, everything's good. Where Danny was talking about the man building a pond is on Bell Road, probably about a mile and a half on the right-hand side after you pass Chuck Stop, right before you get to Tower Hill Road, so Danny was talking about, you're coming over to Tower Hill Road, taking a right, going back toward Dillon, but it's about a mile past Chuck Stop, probably quarter of a mile before you get to Tower Hill Road.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
I don't have a lot for you, Mr. Frederick, a couple of compliments. Thank you for what you did on Cottage G Woodson. Me and my wife rode through there, you can see around the bridge now, coming off of the hill, looks good, and I had a couple residents commend you on the job y'all done on fifteen cutting and stuff, it looks really, really good, and thank you, and we talked about Hidden Springs Road, you've got your ticket called in on that, and the only other one I had is Nobbin Hill Road with the dust, so I get that complaint.
Yes, sir.
Right often, so.
I'll make sure that we're treating it to our standards, to try to control that.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask one more question for the base of this? Concerning the old Andersonville State Shed, what are y'all's plans for that?
We're in the process of selling it as surplus property, so.
Liquidated?
Yes, sir.
Auctioned?
Well, it goes, we have an office that handles that, and we cleaned it out, and they take over at that point, so.
Getting rid of it.
I think it gets advertised to be, I don't think it's an auction, so. It's sort of outside my area of expertise.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody got anything else for Mr. Frederick?
Good, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Board.
Okay, now we're gonna have our public hearing on case twenty-three dash SUP three twenty-nine. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the Board, there is a public hearing for case twenty-three SUP three twenty-nine. This case was introduced last month to the Board at the October meeting. Once again, the landowners are Blue Rock Resources LLC, JAMN Limited Partnership LLP, and the applicant is Blue Rock Solar LLC with RWE Clean Energy. Again, the property and location of this project is Tax Map two oh-two parcel seventy, Tax Map two oh-seven parcel forty-one, and Tax Map two oh-seven forty. These parcels are located near the intersection of State Route six eighty-three, which is Mohealy Road, and State Route six thirty-six, which is Stagecoach Road. This is all in the Curderville Magisterial District. It is, of course, zoned A-one agricultural, and the request from the applicant is to obtain a special use permit to allow for the construction and operation of a solar photovoltaic PV modules to produce up to one hundred megawatts utility scale solar facility on approximately eleven hundred twenty-seven acres here in Buckingham County. The conditions before you are the same, except this evening, the applicant has proposed a greater setback in eleven A. This pertains to setback to property lines and rights of way. A is the property line with a minimum of a fifty-foot setback from solar equipment. The applicant is offering a greater setback of seventy-five feet. Other than that, there are no other changes to conditions at this time. Our applicant is available and is here to address any questions and concerns either before or after, or both, of the public hearing.
Does the applicant have anything, they wanna come up and speak before we open the public hearing part?
We have a presentation for you guys today that we can run through, just a high level, talk about the project in case there's any other questions. We've got some other slides and information I'm gonna pass around to you guys as well. These are mostly focused on the project. I believe a lot of that information was included in a memo that was distributed around the siding agreement. So today, obviously, we're here, you know, seeking termination from, from the Board for approval of our, our special use permit for the Blue Rock Solar project. So at a high level, the, the project that we're presenting is a hundred-megawatt project, it sits on roughly eleven hundred and twenty-seven acres, directly south of Stagecoach Road on the county line, over towards Cumberland. The, the project area itself is closer to six hundred and eighty-six acres, I believe, inside the fence, of which four hundred and seventy-five would be under panel. Some important characteristics about this, you know, the majority of this land is leased, just in case you couldn't read it, so, big text. The, the way we look at this project, you know, the, the biggest impact we see, we've heard some, some of the folks say, say some things in the community about what has contributed to the constituents, your constituents. You know, the way we view this project is really rural economic development. The, the project as it sits now will generate additionally nine-point-six million dollars in local tax revenue that comes to the county over the life of the project. In addition to that, we've proposed a couple different things that, that we believe do not impact your constituents in any form or fashion. The first would be accelerated payments via the siding agreement, you know, of roughly three million dollars, which will be paid if we get approval over the next two and a half years. I think you guys have been presented with, you know, quite a bit of projects, a lot of which have not come to fruition and not really benefited the county. We took a hard look at that, working with the county attorney, and presented something that, that does provide accelerated payments in a very significant form for the county. In addition to that, you know, understanding that, that folks don't want something in their backyard that's gonna, you know, ultimately impact the local taxpayers, you know, we've incorporated four different elements within this siding agreement to, to protect your guys' constituents. The first is a reimbursement of costs over the life of the project, administrative costs. So your staffs reviewing our project, first responders going out, whether there be a brush fire on our property or anything else, those will be covered by the project for the life of the project. The, the second is safety training. We understand that, that, you know, talked about ten mets earlier, I think we all heard that, but, but anyone that has to go out there first would need, you know, accurate training to get into the facility. We've already met with your Asus Emergency Response Group. We would intend to, to perform that jointly with both the Buckingham County and the Cumberland County folks, to ensure that all the first responders from the fire department, EMS, or police would have proper training. The, this third item is decommissioning, and so we've heard some folks say, you know, what happens if you guys disappear? You know, we don't wanna look at this. We do have a leasehold obligation to put a bond security up for the decommissioning and removal and restoration of the project site. In addition, in the siding agreement that we've proposed to the county, we, we are proposing naming the county on that bond, so that if the landowner does not want to go after those funds, that bond, which is securitized money to remove the equipment and restore the land, that the county has access to those funds. The, the third is, is road use, and so, within the siding agreement, we have a requirement that would require us to survey prior to construction, during construction, and post-construction, and fund any repairs from any damages throughout the course of construction. When you look at, you know, other ancillary benefits to the, to the community, you know, this will create hundreds of jobs locally. We do run job fairs. Typically, how we contract is a, you know, a national general contractor, which then will look to source local labor. Kinda skipped this. Back one. And then just general, kind of general characteristics about the project site, why it's unique. So when we look at, you know, the, the area we're located, you know, there's, you know, in comparison to the rest of the county, it's a relatively flat site, so what that equates to is very little earthwork, very little stormwater runoff. Next one. In addition, we know that folks are concerned with the DEQ measures, you know, irregardless of the actions taken by the Board tonight, we would still have to go through two different state-based permits. One for, which is primarily cultural based, the other one, which is DEQ's stormwater plan. There's three agencies that would be sitting on that review, Buckingham County being one of them, the Peter Francisco Water Conservation District would be the second, and then Virginia DEQ would be the third. That permit would need to be reviewed and approved by all three of those agencies. The, the other item we've heard is just local impact to wildlife, and so i-if you look at the design that we've submitted in our, our special use application, you know, we're not asking to fence in the six, seven hundred acres, which will be with, inside the fence of the project. We've actually broken the arrays up into over twenty different array blocks, each individually fenced with wildlife corridors through the middle. And then the, the kinda last ones to conforming with your guys' solar guidance is, is setback. So the, the site uniquely is setback significantly from existing dwellings. We did put in the application a setback, a minimum setback requirement from any existing dwelling of three hundred and fifty feet. If you look at the current design, the, the actual setback from an existing dwelling is over eight hundred feet. So, so I think we can adhere to that, you know, very significantly. The other one, you know, was, was setback to property lines, so we already, you know, petitioned an amendment to our application from the fifty feet up to seven feet, just hearing what, what folks have said locally. And then the, the setbacks from perennial streams and wetlands being fifty feet. And then buffers and view shed, and so, you know, I think most of the things we hear is just, you know, people don't wanna see it, right? I think everyone drives into sixty, I think you guys have probably heard a lot of the complaints over the years about folks just not wanting to see solar panels. You know, we proposed a minimum, you know, based on the guidance that you guys, your solar committee, and also what the Riverstone Project has, a minimum of fifty-foot buffer within the project, a vegetative buffer. This project has, you know, really one singular frontage road, which is Stagecoach Road, most of which is heavily wooded, if you guys have ever driven down it, which I'm sure you guys all have. You know, we, we tend to, to maintain that buffer, and then in events where, where that buffer is not significant enough, you know, mix that with both the, the natural vegetation and planted vegetation to truly keep it out of sight. And then the, the last thing, you know, just for reference for, for both the folks here, and then all the, the Board members, we did provide four different visual simulations, just to represent, you know, that you truly will not be able to see this off of Stagecoach Road, if you wanted to flip through these. So, so point A, this would be drive in west to east along Stagecoach over to the county line. As you can see, you know, there's, you know, significantly heavily vegetated buffering already, along the majority of the frontage road of the site. Let me go to the next one. You know, so that's, this location, I think, you know, the panels are over seven hundred feet, from the corner of the property line, our property line. The, the singular entrance that we'd have on Stagecoach Road would be mostly to access the substation, which we will build indeed over to Dominion. There's an existing high voltage transmission line that runs through the, the body of the project. This shows, you know, what it would look like with five years of growth, and then the, the next slide, I think, shows ten years of growth, so effectively, you know, eliminating any view shed. Slide. Backwards the wrong way. And then just the last one, so again, you know, no visibility from the road, I think you can flip through all of these. I believe we're done. I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions if.
Boaz has got any questions?
I've got one, Mrs. Chairman, or two, maybe, or I'll combine them together. Could you talk a little bit about the protections when it comes to stormwater runoff, in terms of how you all are gonna handle that, and maybe also address the twenty-five percent progression when it comes to solar disturbance, if, if you could?
What, what was the twenty-five percent?
It's condition, Edmondston, it is.
Three.
It's number three C, yeah. It's a, and the conditions that we may or may not adopt in terms of the twenty-five percent limitation as to the land disturbance at one time, I just wanted to see if you could highlight that, or even if Ms. Edmondson could.
Yeah, so the, the disturbance is, is essentially, you know, I believe your guys' solar committee is, is looking to adopt this, this was, you know, previously discussed with your guys' county attorney. It essentially limits the amount of land that we can clear and do any kind of civil work on, to twenty-five percent areas at a time, so essentially, you don't have an entire, you know, not the complete property can be disturbed at a single point, right? And so you're limiting. What that means is, you would then, you know, clear, do your civil work, and then plan any kind of seeding over there to, to restabilize the, the surface, right? So again, just to play into protecting of, or limiting any kind of stormwater issues and runoff issues from the site. The, the stormwater management plan, so as I mentioned earlier, so there's a, you know, fairly rigorous process through Virginia DEQ. It, it's really two parts, so you've got your, your temporary stormwater and sediment erosion control processes that would be implemented during the construction phase, and then there's a permanent stormwater and sediment erosion control implementation plan, so BMP is what they call them, best management practices, which would be implemented throughout the life of the project. As I mentioned earlier, it's really three agencies will review that plan, so they, you know, taking into account, you know, our civil design, so the, the detailed civil engineering design, any kind of grading that would need to take place, and, you know, sizing appropriately those stormwater basins, both the temporary and the permanent ones. It's a really a two-step process. Again, that plan would need to be reviewed in conjunction with all of our civil design by Virginia DEQ, the Peter Francisco Water Conservation District, and the Buckingham County folks.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
I noticed on your brochure, it said about hiring local people, like it actually said, like a hundred and fourteen. Most of your projects, are you able to hire local people to do some of their work?
So, yes and no. And so, you know, in some of our locations, we are in, you know, much more rural areas, right? And so, so that is a limitation. I would say that there's, you know, quite a bit of jobs that are both skilled and unskilled throughout the, the, the construction phase, and so there is, you know, just knowing what your guys' , you know, local economy looks like, there is gonna be quite a bit of appetite that I think could be served, whether there's willingness is a different question.
But I assume your company would look to, to do business in Buckingham if they could, correct?
Yes, sir, we will do local job fairs, that's correct.
And second of all, after it's built, like maintenance, with cutting the grass and that kinda thing, do y'all give that to people within the company, or do you outside, do you do that outside?
No, we look to hire, on this project, roughly two to four people that would be local, full-time. Those would be full-time jobs, and we, we understand that this size of this project doesn't create a significant amount of long-term jobs, while we do have, you know, a couple hundred construction jobs.
I understand that.
That, that number is fairly low. We, you know, the, the individuals will be hired as technicians for the plant, so we're not just gonna hire a guy to cut the lawn, per se. He, he would be trained to operate the facility, to respond to any kind of faults or anything like that. In addition, he's gonna be mowing a lot, so.
I understand. Just asking, if it did go through and it was going, I would ask your company to please try to do. please try to do as much hiring within Buckingham as possible, if it went through.
That would be our intent.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I've had other people talk to me. They said, one person was telling me that in 2025, DEQ has changed their regulations. And I know it's going to be a while before y'all ever get built all the way up, if it approves you today. But do you have any idea, have you heard that, that's been a change? And will that affect you?
So, there is, it could potentially affect us, yes. There is a, you know, change that would take effect in 2025, which would essentially, there's three main components of it, two of which are likely ways that you can resolve and address that. The first would be essentially additional stormwater BMPs, so more basins. The second would be additional conserved open space. When we look at the site characteristics based on our application, you know, we do feel confident that if that measure was, you know, implicating our project, that we have, you know, quite a bit of conserved open space. I think you guys have all seen the layout that we presented. I know, Mr. Allen, you attended our last community meeting, we had a, you know, it printed very large. You know, so in part, I think we could address a lot of those. Irregardless, if DEQ held us to that, we'd obviously be required to.
The only other thing was, and people talked to me about having a policy change, which somebody, they've changed some things on the policy, that we haven't adopted yet. But it's, they were saying 100 feet, and you went up to 75 feet, which is, I think that's good. And talking about people's homes was 500 feet, and you just said 800 feet from the homes that you saw?
So, yeah, when we look at our, I believe we've presented this map to you guys, with the measured distances on there, you know, we'd be, you know, we're obviously in compliance, I think, in our opinion, on what your guys' current solar policy is seeking, with 350 foot. If there was a change to 500 feet, I don't think in any way that would affect our project, you know, just based on the fact that any resident existing dwelling as today is over 800 feet.
I just want to talk to you. I know, I know that if you've done a lot of calculating, if we change it right now, it would be a big difference for y'all, but-
Yeah, I don't think a change from 350 to 500 would impact us, based on the current design at all.
Okay.
Anyone else? Don't, Mr. Matthews?
Could you expand on that 75? I just want to make sure we get it clear for the adjoining landowners on that 75-foot increase up from 50 to 75, on that-
Yes, sir. So, just understanding that folks, there was just, we heard at least, you know, one or more concerns about how close we would be to their property line. We wanted to make a good faith, you know, change to our application to essentially add, you know, change that from a 50-foot setback requirement from any panels or fencing up to 75 feet from the property line. You know, I think there's been some other misinformation and confusion from some folks thinking that that went into their property. This would be within our project boundary. So, from our property line inward before any equipment could be placed.
And also, could you expand a little bit on the, some of the things that, if they were to occur, as far as, you're going to have a lot of construction traffic on that particular highway, which is Stagecoach Road, 636. You know, we, what is, what happens if that road starts to break down? I just want you to kind of give your company's input on that. I know it is a VDOT road, and the county does not own the right of ways, but VDOT does take care of those and expenses those things out. But if we were to start getting damage on that particular road, what is your company willing to do?
Sure. Well, first off, I think, you know, Mr. Frederick, who spoke earlier, you know, VDOT would be required to review a traffic management plan, right, prior to the start of construction. So, that's first and foremost. They would look at, you know, quantities of traffic, you know, any other kind of, like, safety mitigation measures that would need to be put in place throughout the term of the construction. To answer your other question about what are we offering as far as protection on the road, as I mentioned earlier, you know, we understand that we're coming to you guys asking to put this here, right? That your constituents are not asking for this. And, you know, through that siding agreement, you know, we've proposed, you know, elements that we think really protect your guys' taxpayers, in the sense that we add, you know, significant tax revenue, you know, being increasing from the current use to what we're proposing. In addition to that additional $3 million, one of the four other elements that I had mentioned earlier, you know, which is embedded in the siding agreement, requires us to survey the roads and maintain and repair any damages during construction and post-construction. Essentially, you know, we would front the bill for any damages. We would ensure it's done. That would be done in collaboration with VDOT. But, you know, we're trying to make sure that that's covered, and nothing comes out of your guys' constituents' pockets.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. I'll open to public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Chairman. There are eight individuals signed up to speak this evening. The first will be Mrs. Bobko, followed by Dan Pimple.
Good evening, gentlemen. I am Mrs. Bobko. I've been here before, and I just wanted to still let you know my concerns. Number one is, just recently, after I saw the plat of where they are putting the solars, I was floored. I had no idea that many and that so close to my land, to the property line. And also, having it that close, I think it's going to reduce the value of my property. And the other thing is, I'm still concerned about the water, you know, with the solars, if the panels do fall off or deteriorate. And they say there's no toxicity in it, but I have read that most of them are, and into the water, drinking water. And the other thing I have is the wildlife. I just, that is my main concern, even with them putting fences around or whatever. It's not wide open for them to run. And the other thing I had concern about was, all this is going on, and we get nothing out of this. I hear it's all Dominion Power that's getting from that. I'm with Southside Electric, and I just feel that, you know, I didn't know anything about this until just recently. But I just wanted to let you know my concern, because I'm really against it, and I just wanted to let you know how I felt.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Next individual is Dan Pimple, followed by Dr. Elizabeth Lee Robertson.
My name is Dan Pimple. I'm a brother-in-law of Jenny, and I own property right next to her also. My concern is, I mentioned the taxes right now, they were paying, collecting is $5,300, and you're going to go up to a whole $34,000 with this construction. If you look at the public information on solar farms, hey, that's the greatest thing going. You can get 19,500 to 32,000, 32,500 per acre profit if you put solar farms in. So, 1,000 acres, that'll be 19.5 million dollars. Who's getting all this money? I know they're going to pay for this solar farm, but somebody's making a heck of a lot of money. And I'd like to know whether any US money, taxpayer money, for either grants or anything else that's going into this. And as for using it for farming, it's still being leased as farmland also, at the same time trying to lease it to them, two people at one time. That ain't going to work. Better off with the farm. And as they mentioned before, how much is Dominion getting from this? They were saying it's a dollar fifty-four per person per month decrease in their electric bill, and that's going up north. How much is staying here, does anybody know yet? Nobody knows yet, right? You're gambling. I'm from, I'm an ex-New Yorker 23 years ago, and they had more rackets going up there compared to here, and that's why I left. Prince Edward, they're building a solar panel to the east of Farmville right now, $300,000 homes. Now, all of a sudden, they're putting a solar plant right next to them. They're up in arms. Charlottesville is up in arms because they didn't pay any attention to how many acres you can use for solar farms, and they're getting bombarded with solar farms. The one in Rice, they got a solar farm up there, and it's not being maintained. I was talking to a gentleman yesterday on that. Yeah, it's up there, but nobody's maintaining the thing. So, I think you're taking a big chance and gambling. I think that's about all. I'm totally against it. Better look into it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Elizabeth Lee Robertson, she'll be followed by Bill Lee.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors, I appreciate the letter that you sent to me. I am Elizabeth Lee Robertson, and you notified me that my property could be impacted by solar panels adjacent to the property. So, I'm grateful for your letter, so that I'm now coming on board, learning a little bit more about what this is all about. I have approximately 450 acres in Buckingham and Cumberland Counties, 169 acres are in Cumberland. It's more the Buckingham property that's being challenged at this point. The focus of tonight's meeting, in this portion of it, seems to be about land usage. It is a very, very precious commodity, and it's very important that you be good stewards of the citizens of Buckingham County as you make your decision about how to go forward. My property, in its past, for generations, my family's property, has been used as a cattle farm, as a crop farm, and it is still in use for crops. I am very appreciative and fortunate to have a local farmer that has taken care of every open piece of land that we have. He is making sure that crops, the rotation, all of that part of caring for our soil, our land, and also offering a food chain. While we think about the glory and the benefits of less expensive energy, and it's important to be optimistic about the future and about a better way to research how we move about protecting our country, our world, in terms of energy. But we can have light, and we can have warmth from it, but if we do not have the soil to produce the food chain, food is the source of our life. So, keep that in mind as you decide to allocate acreage after acreage to another method of farming. Recently, I made contact with Virginia Tech. You are where I'm sure that they have acquired or been designated $3.4 million to research solar, and the agricultural department is a part of that research. They will be studying the water roll-off of the panels and so forth. So, please know that we are not trying, as a family or as a member of this community, to dictate how others decide to allocate their land for usage.
Your three minutes is up, ma'am.
Oh, I had so much more to tell you. Pause, pause, pause. And I have lots of questions that I will give to you at some point. If you cannot answer them tonight, then you do need to pause, as another speaker has asked you to do. There's a lot of information yet to be had. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker will be Bill Lee, followed by Donnie Doryer.
I need a proxy speaker, please.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. We don't allow for that in our bylaws.
Pardon?
I'm sorry?
We do not allow that in our bylaws.
Okay, then not a problem.
Okay. You don't want the information, but I-
Apparently not. Well, hello, and thank you for giving me my three minutes. I want to tell you something. At six years old, my granddaddy took my little hand, and he walked me around the property lines. He said, "Son, you've got to learn to love this property." And that's what I'm doing today. I'm standing here trying to love that property. You know what? Don't take that away from me. Please, don't take that away from me. I've done everything. I have no knees left because I worked so hard on that property. I just, I've got nothing left other than the property. I'm not making a dime off of it. I'm just trying to preserve it. That's all. That's all I can do. And I hope I came in under three minutes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Donnie Doryer, District 6. Last month, Chairman Chambers asked me would I be on a solar policy committee, and I agreed to be on that, along with Mr. Wright, Mr. Carter, Mr. Matthews, Mr. Davis, and Mr. Carcella. That was a very productive, very productive meeting. We found out, we had Mr. Carter, who, for other terms, made what I call a cheat sheet. It was a piece of paper that had Riverstones, some of Riverstone stuff, and some of the draft from the solar company there. And we went down through those things, item by item. We found out there were some things on the draft that was not associated, or was not on there that was on the Riverstone, which is very important. So, we included those. But we also found some that was on Riverstone that needed to be actually strengthened up to help this county. So, we added those things into the policy. And I agree into that also. There were some other things also that was on neither one of them, but we added those into it. So, as of today, we still have a draft, but it's much better than the conditions that was on Riverstone. Much, much better. I was hoping that this policy could be, maybe firmed up a little bit more, but at least brought before the board to be approved. But instead of that, we are still sitting here with no policy. We're kind of naked in a way. So, what I'm asking is that the solar, that the board wait on any further, that's including Blue Stone, that's including Davis, that's including the one coming up in Yucatan. We wait on those until we have a solar policy in effect. I heard the gentleman from Blue Rock said a few minutes ago, "Hey, I've upped it from 50 feet to 75 feet." Well, he don't tell us what he ups it to. We tell them what we up it to. It's our, it's our county. It's our county. We make those decisions, not them. So, I think, from what I heard from him, hey, I think he can, he can work within what we've already got. I think that once it's already there, can work within the realms of what we have. But we need to have a policy. I know the $3 million thing sometimes will mind-boggle us, and it gets us sometimes where we don't know exactly what's going on. But I'm asking this one thing right here. If we don't have a policy, it's no use, and I say it being up here, if, if Riverstone and them come forward and present theirs, and you agree to it or you don't agree to it, then we don't have a policy whatsoever. We don't have anything, and we're just floating in the wind. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mike Morris will be next, followed by Jacob Caracella.
Mike Morris?
District 3. Don Matthews is my supervisor.
Don, thank you for your service. Mr. Palmer, welcome. A little bit of a different opinion. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here to give you my opinion tonight on solar farms. I would say modern society and our culture not only developed because of new energy sources, but I would argue that the survival of our society depends on new innovative sources of energy. I believe that the answer to eventually supply enough energy for our society will require development of a variety of sources. So I would say that if we, as a society, ban or very harshly regulate all new ideas, nuclear energy, for instance, because of environmental concerns, fossil fuels, everybody drove here tonight, they make use of fossil fuels either directly or indirectly, windmills, big issue at places. They're being protested across the country because of bird impacts, aesthetics, marine life impacts, hydroelectric power. That's being protested for various reasons, including fish migration, arable lands, submission, putting land underwater. Biofuels, they have an indirect effect on carbon emissions, they're costly, they can negatively impact food prices, they might even strain water resources. We're concerned about all of these things. Or finally, tonight, as we're discussing solar farms, which may or may not ultimately be a significant contributor to our survival, only time will tell. In all of these cases, I believe, common sense engineering and regulation are critical. Every person in attendance here tonight relied on some of these energy sources, either very directly or indirectly, every single one of us rely on energy in some form. But one more thought. Can you imagine the protests that would erupt around the country this year, the year 2023? If someone with a new idea said, "Let's put up power poles, cut right-of-way for power poles, make a way to put electric power poles through to supply electric energy to our homes," can you imagine what the uproar would be? And yet, every single person here tonight relies on modern, regulated, electric power transmission. So I pose a question. Would you rush to an emergency room in the future with an injured child if you knew they had no electric power at that hospital because our generation failed to develop new energy resources? Because that may be what we're talking about here tonight.
Time's up.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next will be Jacob Caracella, followed by Guy Dixon.
Before I get into my speech, I just want to be clear, for the integrity of you gentlemen and myself and the nonprofit I represent, that we would never, ever urge you to make a vote one way or the other on a solar project, or any project for that matter. But my name is Jacob Caracella. I'm a lifelong Virginian from Hampton Roads, and I'm with Energy Right, a nonprofit educating rural Virginia on the best practices for renewable energy done the right way, with a focus on property rights and classic conservative ideals, like in all of the above strategy just mentioned, meaning we should utilize all forms of energy generation, re-promote energy independence for this Commonwealth and country. Energy Right shares your high standards for solar development. A smart solar project needs a top-tier developer with a community-tailored plan aligned with the county's objectives while respecting all landowners' rights. From our perspective, the rights of the landowner to make a responsible use of their property is the most integral component. It's no secret counties are facing challenges and determining the role of solar energy and land use, but we are aware of a possibility that state-level decisions could override these local decisions and authority. However, Energy Right believes that these decisions require the attention of local leaders who possess a nuanced understanding of their communities, and we urge you to make thoughtful decisions in light of, in light of these conversations in Richmond. Collaboratively addressing concerns ensures good projects thrive while safeguarding local interests. Ultimately, it falls upon community leaders like you all to make case-by-case decisions in the best interests of this county and based on each, the merits of each project presented before you. Your commitment to responsible development is commendable, and we believe that high-quality, responsible solar development aligns with this county's vision. Just last month, at the Governor's Summit on Rural Prosperity in Notaway County, Secretary of Agriculture Matt Louris stated that 80% of farmers in Virginia have a second stream of income to sustain their farming activities and to make ends meet. For some landowners, solar may be the best and/or only option. Although economic development is separate from land use decisions, we do want to note that solar projects offer valuable tax benefits to localities, significant relief to taxpayers, and new opportunities for local business, as you've heard tonight. The revenue from solar projects could mitigate substantial increases of local taxes or even allow for rebates to residents for, for property taxes, as we've seen in Charlotte County just this past year alone. In closing, I encourage you to take into account the property rights of landowners, along with the economic benefits, while considering these projects. Well-developed projects can coexist with your values while adhering to laws and driving economic growth. An energy rights view, local decisions that take into account landowner rights is always the best-case scenario. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
The next and final individual signed up to speak.
Can we hold on for one minute, Ms. Edmondson? We lost power, and we, we don't have any time or anything, so.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman.
Take a couple minutes.
Vice Chairman.
While that's going on, I'm gonna go to the bathroom.
All right, thank you.
Last individual signed up to speak during the public hearing this evening is Guy Dixon.
Y'all won't need a clock for me, I got about thirty seconds. Stuff to say. I'm Guy Dixon, I'm from Cameron's district, I guess that's District Two, I learned something new tonight. And my business is located in Don's district, so that's who I am. Anyway, I wanted to speak in favor of this project for a variety of reasons. You know, one, I think it's got lots of benefits for our community, for our local economy, and for the environment. You know, first of all, the place, the location is ideal for this project. Well, that's your opinion.
And we refrained, we didn't nobody interrupt anybody else when they were speaking, so let him speak his piece.
There are major, you know, power lines traverse this property, which makes it, which makes it an ideal location to have us, because it can hook right into those distribution lines and be distributed all over the place. It's also, and I think it's been mentioned before, relatively flat, and that is definitely a plus for a solar farm. Solar land, quite frankly, is some of the least fertile land that we have at Blue Rock Resources, my company. I don't know what happened there back in geologic time, but the soil is different than it is in other places. The trees don't grow big, and it retains water, and it's just not that great of land. So it's not like a super duper farming asset. Obviously, you know, when this thing is getting built, there's lots of construction jobs, and lots of primary, secondary, and tertiary benefits to come into the community through all those jobs. And then we heard it is even going to have a few full-time jobs forever, so that's always a positive. I think the guy from RWE, you know, had the numbers up there, but there's a lot of money on the table for the county. Three million dollars kind of upfront, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars each year in perpetuity after that, and that's got to be, that's great for the county. And at the end of the project's lifespan, the land will be returned to its original use, and that's great. But Mike Morris made a really good point. The key to prosperity for the community, and the state, and the nation is abundant, cheap, reliable, and as clean as you can get it, power. And that's what, and that's what this project will do. And we, as a country, have decided that we're going to go down this road, and we as a state have decided we're going to go down this road. And we're putting all these mandates, renewable mandates, on the power companies. And the stuff has got to go somewhere, and if you've got to choose a place, this is a pretty good place for it. Thank you.
Thirty seconds, Guy. All right, I'll turn it over to the board for discussion.
Cameron, I'd like to make a motion. I move that the Board of Supervisors approve the special use permit for Blue Rock Solar LLC in case number two-three-dash-SUP three-two-nine to allow the construction and operation of a solar photovoltaic utility scale solar facility that can produce up to 100 megawatts on approximately 1,127 acres in Buckingham County on the twenty-nine condition set forth in the memo from the zoning administrator to the board dated November fourteenth, 2023, and found in the board package with one exception, that in condition eleven A, the fifty-foot change to be changed to seventy-five feet.
Second, Mr. Chairman. And on that note, you know, I don't hide from my stances. I support solar as long as it's done correctly in terms of these conditions, and these conditions are tight. We used essentially the same conditions here that we used for the Riverstone project up in District One and District Six perhaps. I think this is going to be a good project for the county. You know, let's not hide from it, we're facing a tax increase next year perhaps on the landowners. And I think in, you know, when we have opportunities like things of industry that wants to come into the county, I think it's an opportunity that we need to strike on and take advantage of. And I tell people this, I know the Route sixty project, and this is way before some of my time and some of the time with my fellow supervisors, you can see that project, it's very, very visible. This will not be that project, the Riverstone project will not be that project. That Route sixty project is not representative of solar done correctly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second on the floor, but before we go to a vote, I'd like to make a statement. My personal opinion is that we wait, but I have a motion on the floor. I would like to see us have the zoning ordinance in place before we vote on anymore. But I have the motion and the second on the floor, so we will go to a vote. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion case, five to one. With one absent.
And then, Mr. Chairman, I would offer a motion that the, along with item K-one-A, I'd make a motion that the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors set a public hearing at its December twenty-twenty-three regular meeting to receive public comments on the proposed siting agreement between Blue Rock Resources, I'm sorry, between Blue Rock Solar LLC and Buckingham County.
Second.
I'll second it. We have a motion by Supervisor Miles, second by Supervisor Matthews. All those in favor, uplift a hand. All those opposed? Eyes have it, five to one. One absent. Okay, that's that, we'll go into zoning matters, Ms. Emerson, do you have anything?
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Chairman, the next case before you this evening is the introduction of case twenty-three-SUP three-thirty-one. Landowners are Ivan and Deborah Davis at one-oh-six Whetstone Lane. The applicant is Buckingham Solar One LLC, a portion of New Energy Equity LLC, Tax Map one-fifty-one, parcel seventeen. This does contain approximately 166.62 acres, and it's located at or near Whetstone Lane, Dillon, Virginia. It's in the Curdville Magisterial District. The zoning district is Agricultural A-one, and the request before you is to obtain a special use permit to allow for the construction and thirty-five-year operation of a five-megawatt AC photovoltaic community solar garden. The applicant is asking the Board of Supervisors to hold a public hearing for this request. This request does have thirty conditions attached to that for your review, and this case was introduced initially to the Planning Commission July twenty-fourth, 2023, in a public hearing held October twenty-third, 2023. The Planning Commission voted unanimously recommending approval of this case. Would it be the pleasure of the Board of Supervisors to schedule a public hearing for this request? And if so, December eleventh, 2023, six P.M. is the next scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting. The applicant is here with us this evening to address questions and concerns that you may have.
Anyone have any questions for the applicant? What's the board's pleasure?
I'd like to, I'd like to address the board. First of all, the projects in my district, District Two, I went to both question-and-answer periods that the solar power company had dealing with Mr. Davis's project. I did find it very different from some of the solar power farms. This project actually has the opportunity to reduce people's power bills in the community. It's one of the very few ones that I said that if you signed up, it could reduce the power bill by maybe as much as ten percent. I think it will hold fifteen, fifteen-hundred applicants. That would help reduce the power bill within the community. So it's one of the few projects that actually directs the power and the savings back to the community. With that said, I'd like to move forward, make a motion that we go ahead and approve a special use permit.
We've got to have a public hearing.
I mean, a public hearing for it, yes, set a public hearing.
You can make a motion on the board now, I understand it's working.
Okay.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Supervisor Gillum, and a second by Supervisor Miles. What's the board's pleasure, by uplift of hand? Eyes. A six-zero is unanimous, one absent. We have a public hearing on December, what was the date, Ms. Emerson?
December eleventh at six P.M.
December eleventh, six P.M. All right, what's next on the agenda, Ms. Emerson?
The last case from the zoning department is an introduction of twenty-three-SUP three-thirty-two. The landowner is Jesse M. Woodson Johnson at thirty-seven-eight-one Petersville Church Road, New Canton, Virginia, two-three-one-two-three, and the applicant is CWJ Properties LLC of the same address. The property information for this request is Tax Map eighty-six, parcel nine. It does contain just approximately one acre, and it is located at thirty-nine-seventy-three Petersville Church Road, New Canton, State Route six thirteen, in the Marshall Magisterial District. It is currently zoned A-one, and the applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit to operate an adult home assisted living facility. The applicant is asking the Board of Supervisors to schedule a public hearing for this request. This case was introduced to the Planning Commission September twenty-fifth, 2023, in a public hearing held October twenty-third, 2023. The Planning Commission voted unanimously recommending approval of this case. Would it be the pleasure of the Board of Supervisors to schedule a public hearing for this request, December eleventh, 2023, six P.M.?
I make a motion, do we approve, I mean, not, being like you now, set a public hearing, I'm sorry.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second, a motion by Supervisor Allen, second by Supervisor Miles. What's the board's pleasure, I think we can vote on the screen now, Jamie?
No.
One more time?
One more time, yeah, you'll vote.
If you make it known by the uplift of hand, if you, aye, is unanimous. Thank you, it will be December.
Yes, sir.
All right, departments and agencies, I think Dr. Keela is our first one up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Before we start, I would like to extend an invitation to all of you for our second Heroes Breakfast that is on Friday, Friday, December first. It's eight-thirty to ten o'clock, I think some of you may have attended last year. It's put on by our senior class, and we invite police, first responders, bus drivers, secretaries, our heroes that need to be praised at this time of the year. It's a good experience for our seniors to present you with a little gift. Not much, but it's the thought that counts. So I hope that she will make an effort anytime between eight-thirty and ten at the middle school cafeteria. They make, we get the best food down there, so, and they even make gravy, so. We are tonight requesting approval of a twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget update to amend our budget due to the recent updated state budget that was released to the school system on September fourteenth, as well as grant funding adjustments. So we have, during this time, have adjusted our ADM from the original projection of eighteen forty-five to what it was reported on the state September thirtieth of eighteen seventeen. This reduction of twenty-eight students lowers our state funding by approximately a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Now, we'll note that the majority of that is, we found out it was students that did not live in our county and were coming to our schools. So we felt like we needed to take care of that. State budget included an additional a hundred and ten thousand, seventy-four dollars compensation supplement to be used for a two percent salary increase effective January for our SOQ position. So we dealt with the budget through the skinny budget in February, which was mandated that we do five percent, and that's what we did. And then in September, which we still got five percent, and you all helped us with that, we're asking for, and now we can do a two percent starting January one through June thirty. Also included in the funding was a grant called the All-In Grant of a million, twenty thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars, which would be paid to the division this fiscal year, with seventy percent of that grant going to tutoring. Twenty percent for the implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act, and ten percent for student attendance recovery. Now, this is what the governor came up with, you remember back here about a month or so ago, or six weeks ago. And he said that on October sixteenth, we want to see it started. And that was, we're into our fifth week, we were one of the few that got started on October sixteenth. And we have, I'm proud to say that the middle school and the elementary school, which this tutoring grant involves, we have eighty-five to ninety percent of our kids being tutored in mathematics and reading every day. We had a visit from the state superintendent last Friday. First time I've ever had a state superintendent come to our workplace or anywhere I've ever worked. And she was very, very pleased to see the quality of teaching and going on. Had primary school with three different teachers, and the same thing for the elementary school. So much she says she's going to get her camera crew to come and see if they, you know, show the quality of teaching, and I hope that happens. In other grants, we're adding the Department of Criminal Justice Campus Safety and Active Learning Grant for Buckingham Primary, an additional seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars, and other state funds. In federal funding, current grants have been updated to actual carryover amounts, and a new year grant awards, as well as the addition of a Title IV Part A's Stronger Connections Grant in amount of three hundred thousand dollars. Now, we use this, we use this to give security on our campuses. This will help pay for, I have two security guards now at the middle, high school, one at the middle school, and we have two at the complex, and this will help pay for them. And I think carry, you know, even into next year. In local appropriation, we're asking to, the approval to increase the contracted salaries by two, two percent, either effective July one or instead January one. Now, if you go back to July one, you know, where we thought we were going to get seven percent in this contract, it's going to cost more money. It's about, we'll need to ask for like three hundred thousand dollars. If we do it January one, it's probably going to be in the neighborhood of like a hundred and ten thousand. Does that make sense? This would, we have, we have not added, included additional increases for the contracted bus drivers since the county has already appointed an additional salary increase within August, and we appreciate that. I can honestly tell you, I think Ronnie has hired four new bus drivers, and I can tell you one thing, it's because of that. That's a very competitive salary, and I don't have to worry about somebody picking off our bus drivers in the county. But when you, you know, is, you're looking at somebody, one of our neighboring counties didn't have enough, and they look to us to see if they can get people. Also included is a one-time reappropriation of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of revenue from the CTE Competitive Skills Grant, which were received actually on June thirtieth, but will be expended in the fiscal year. And that money is, we got it, and it's going to go into our auto, auto department and try to pay for a lift for the kids. The total adjustment to the regular operations budget is like two million, four hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars. In the cafeteria budget, we are lowering the state funds due to the budget release of eleven thousand, one dollar. Federal funding is increasing by one hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and six dollars due to an increased participation in two grants. And the total adjustment to the cafeteria fund is a hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and five dollars, with a grand total adjustment to the twenty-twenty-four budget of two million, six hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars. If approved, whenever y'all get around to approve it, we will submit this request back, you know, to our board and go from there with what we want to do. At this time, I would like to have JB come up because we're at the finish. We're at the finish line with all the Esther funds and the grants we had, and we worked on sixteen projects for three-point-seven-five million dollars. I'm very proud of that, and we're on our last one, so he's going to give you a rundown of where they stand.
Evening, Board, thank you so much for letting me be here.
Evening, Board. Thank you so much for letting me be here. I appreciate what you guys do. Just a quick rundown, give you the bird's eye view. We have worked together to have a high school roof replacement that's flattened metal. You guys helped us with that. Thank you so much. We've also upgraded our HVAC throughout the county with EBI controls, boilers, chillers to be installed in spring. We've also been able to do a roof recoded CTE, same at the primary school, same at the elementary school. It's been very productive. We're also getting a new wheelchair lift at the high school, much needed. That's been, that's been a source. We've needed to correct that for a while. We also had a siding repair at the Carter G. Woodson Educational Complex as well. We've worked on that. We've had some work done at the alternative ed, which is the Berryman Project, but you guys also helped us to acquire that property. Thank you. We've also done some work with the HVAC unit at the high school office, much needed, also with the preschool as well. So we've been busy making sure that we use those funds appropriately, following along with our capital improvement plan, making sure that we put it to good use for Buckingham.
Any questions? Anybody have any questions for Mr. Keeler?
So, Mr. Chairman, I I guess it would be appropriate for us to handle, could we handle the budget adjustment first and then vote on that and then consider the the proposal for the two percent? Would that be appropriate? Okay. Is is that okay with you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
All right. So first, I'd I'd move that we approve the the budget adjustments with the state and local federal money that does, that excludes the two percent request. So this is just, give me that, this is just this right here. That's what I'm asking. This this excludes the two percent.
I don't have that. Was that in that packet?
No, it's at the table. Here, hand him the color.
Here you go, Cam.
And just to ask the question of Dr. Keeler, if I could, Mr. Chairman, so that one hundred and twenty, that one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, is that coming from local end-of-year balance?
No, that's a
It's not, okay.
That's a grant.
I just saw local year-end reappropriation, so that, so that's not mistaken. That's a grant, not local money. In other words, and this adjustment, there's no local money being adjusted. Correct?
Well, it would be local money adjusted if you go back to July with the two percent to add on as opposed to going
Sure, but but I'm just referencing this, the the budget adjustment, right?
Yeah, I think that's right.
Okay.
You gotta ask me some easy stuff here, too.
No, I was just asking, is there any local money being moved within the budget paper that was presented? That's all.
No.
Right, okay.
No.
It is. And and I assume that's sort of some sort of a matching grant, perhaps? It's not. Oh, okay. So I'd it is.
Chairman? If if we're gonna Miles is is asking to vote on one, and I'm not sure what he's saying to do with the other one. But I I don't see anything wrong with sending this to the Finance Committee, both of them, and looking over this, over this before we make a decision on it. Because none of us were able to even look at, to make a decision before tonight. It's all fresh, and I think it would be great to go to the Finance Committee before we made a decision with this kind of money.
So with both, Chairman, if I could ask him a question, with both of the two percent, either January or July, and then this concerning the one hundred and twenty-five thousand and the local reappropriation from year-end, is that right?
Yes, I'd like to make
All right. So I withdraw my motion then.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we send it to the Finance Committee to look over it and then get back to us after we make that decision.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Supervisor Gilliam and a second by Supervisor Miles, which is the Board's pleasure.
And and then I'll add, too, that I'm gonna just say it, you know, this is not an attempt to to tank anything in that we just got our fiscal year twenty-two audit. So I hope people understand that we have to look at, the board just saw it tonight.
Yeah, we
So and that's, and I know you all did, too. So that's part of my hesitation as well with the two percent.
Yes, sir.
Take a vote.
Let's take a vote. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, send it to the Finance Committee to look over, or is it working? Fun worked.
You got the motion on there.
Oh, let's steal back at it.
And if, Mr. Chairman, real quick, I would ask Supervisor Gilliam if it's okay to amend the motion to bring a recommendation back in at the next December meeting. Is that okay from the Finance Committee?
As long as you all can get together in the meantime and look over it.
Absolutely. Okay, right. Good. Thank you.
We'll vote on amended motion. Do it by hand. All those in favor, send it to the Finance Committee. Unanimous, six, zero, one absent.
Back in December with the recommendation.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Kidd, come on down.
Good evening. We're a little, little past the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, but we've kind of been behind a little bit. Appreciate your due diligence and administering sound fiscal judgment over the county's overall budget. And I personally want to thank each of you for your continued support of my office. As we're going into the new budget year, in an effort to balance the past, I respectfully request the below transfers and reimbursements to the noted line items. And pardon me, I'm kind of a little short of breath tonight. The total amount of requested reimbursements is one hundred and twenty thousand eighty-three dollars and four cents. This will negate expenditures and leave our overall budget with a surplus of fifty-nine thousand six hundred ninety dollars for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year.
Right.
I would like to reserve the right to maybe come back and revisit if I have a real need for that money in the future.
I'd offer a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the with the budget readjustments and the transfers and the reimbursements.
A second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Miles and a second by Supervisor Gilliam, which is the Board's pleasure. Uplift the hands. Six and zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. All right. Consider a request from Central Virginia Services for space at the Gold Hill Solid Waste Site. The Fiber Hut, serve and maintain projects, and if you agree, go ahead.
I'll talk a little about that, Mr. Chairman. Yes, in your package tonight, you should have a letter from myself, a memo referencing Central Virginia, Central Virginia Services is requesting space at our Gravel Hill Solid Waste Site to place the Fiber Hut to serve the remaining RIS project areas in the county. In your, in your package, you also see a color map showing the fence that overlay of the site. Suppose move that fence in some so they can put this hut. What they ran into is that also in that drawing, you can see some overhead Dominion lines. They'd be underneath those lines directly or Solid Waste Site. As a question to bring the, our existing fence in about ten feet and install that hut partially inside the previous fence area and partially outside. Because Dominion power lines have run above the project. Proposed hut would be about standard hut, standard hut, small brown concrete building that would sit on a concrete pad that measures about twenty by twenty, twelve by twenty. After construction, CBS has estimated maybe one vehicle visiting the site per month to monitor electronics inside of the hut. Altogether, they're requesting an area about a fifty by fifty area that include the building, generator, and parking for one or two vehicles. I spoke with Mr. Lynn Hill, our Solid Waste Supervisor. He thinks that these change larger sites in the county. And as Chairman said, if you agree with this concept, please allow myself and Mr. Wright to work with CBSI to work on a contract agreement.
But we'd like to move it into another place, not exactly where you got it marked.
We can do that, but we, I would still like to use the public hearing up so we can, as the public's hearing schedule, we'll still work on a NIFL location.
Yeah, public hearing is okay. I'm just saying that, you know, I didn't want to put it in the front of it like
Second, Mr. Chairman?
We have a motion by Supervisor Bryant and a second by Supervisor Miles to set a public hearing, which is the Board's pleasure. Uplift the hands. Six to zero.
Also bring up back a contract that you guys, you got.
All right. Now we're considered M four?
Yes. M four, tonight you should have a proposal already agreed with our RRC. This came along as because, you know, we have a contract with them for like the last seven years. That contract recently expired. We put on the RFP for proposals and only see one, which is RRC. Finance Committee met with RRC, discussed the past twenty-two audits along with possible future audits for the county. Following that meeting, it's the Finance Committee recommendation to hire Robson Farmer Cox as our auditing firm for the county at a base price of sixty-eight thousand five hundred per year. Agreement will be for fiscal years ending June thirty, twenty twenty-three, through June thirty, twenty twenty-seven, with an option to renew for three additional years. RRC consent to that. Actually, it's a copy of the proposed contract, and I'm just asking you, do you want to seven years or only RFP we can back for services?
There's going to be an increase, too, isn't it? I mean
Yes.
Totals, totals that they, they're not going to be honoring what they've been doing. The the contract price is going up on their audits.
Yes, our contract was for the last seven years, I think it was about fifty thousand dollars. This one is at sixty-eight five.
Right.
Yes, because it's been a while since we've done this.
Some of those are due to COVID, but I don't see it going backwards because of the inflation rate that we have right now.
Inflation and then as Ms. Choate talked to you earlier, there's a lot more standards today are ordering now than they did.
And I know, Mr. Chairman, I know I've I've talked to Ms. Choate, Carl and I, and I mean, I talked to her on yesterday and, you know, expressed my disdain for the late, 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 late audit. But but I've gotten assurances that that won't happen again, so I'm fine with it. I'd offer a motion to to go forward. To, I'm sorry, to approve the, to adopt and approve the contract for auditing services.
You have to do three years when you do the contract, because I say the job performance hadn't been the best of getting back to
Last year.
Do we have to do three years? I say we give them a, if, you know, is there any way we could do it for a year and see if they perform and give us a better service than what they did this past time?
Just in doing like a one-year base and then additional optional years after that?
I brought it up with the board. I just know that it's been really, really behind, hasn't it?
Yes, extremely late.
I mean
We're working on twenty-two, and it's already the end of twenty-three.
I, I mean as a customer, I would think that, you know, I understand that they said they were going to provide it. But I was just wondering, without tying ourselves up for three years, if we could talk about doing something and say, hey, look, here's your mulligan, here's your last chance. But I don't know, it's up to you all, whatever you all want to do on that.
I understand when you come in, Mr. Gilliam, do you want to do it for one year and additional four-year options, one-year increments, or? I guess we want to go back to, we want to have something, so it's not just one year, so we come back and do an RFP once again next year.
What if we
I'm just trying to make sure that if they don't meet, if they do it the same way they did it this time, then I think we need to look at switching. And if we tie ourselves up for three or four years, then we're back in, how are we going to position ourselves with them?
So, Mr. Chairman, to Supervisor Gilliam's point, I would say, is there any way we can do like an option of renewing if we're happy after the first year and then keep going? And I know that's a hard question off the fly.
I guess it's going to be, what's the definition of happy?
On time. Yeah, that's been my
You'll put it as long as it's satisfactory, then, if you want to.
Yeah, to the board.
Do you have anybody else that you would, huh?
We only got this one proposal.
That's that's all you got?
So we got one person to cut the grass, right?
Yeah.
I got you.
You ain't got no other options.
Yeah.
They've been doing it for years, though.
Okay.
And I will say, they've done it for, ever since I've been here, and this is the only abnormal year that I've
I think you've done a good job myself.
They have up until this year. This is the first time I've seen one behind.
Okay, is this the first, okay. If this is the first time, let's just go ahead and take, trust them, and I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
We have a motion.
Did anyone second it?
Okay.
We have a motion from Supervisor Miles and a second from Supervisor Allen, which is the Board's pleasure. Uplift the hand. Six, nothing, one absent.
Place it down.
All right, M five is next.
Yes, under separate cover, you should have a recommendation from the Personnel Committee. Once again, since this is a committee recommendation, there's no action needed to be taken unless you got have no questions or discussions, we can move on to the next.
No discussion.
Okay. Nobody got anything? All right, we'll go to N one.
I think I didn't have for M six.
Oh, sorry.
M six.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ruth Wallace, I'm sorry.
I was out of my seat and then stopped, frozen my track.
I seen it in red. I thought it was cancer. My fault. I'm blind.
That's okay. Thank you for allowing me to come this evening. I'm with Virginia Cooperative Extension. And we come to ask for a, an additional budget allocation of twelve thousand ninety-eight dollars. Very similar to what Dr. Keeler mentioned with the school system and increased raises from the state. We are in that same boat here. When we came in the spring, we knew that we would have to come back. We did not include July raises because we did not know if they would be approved at the state level or not, and so they were not included in our budget that you approved this spring. So this figure represents a salary adjustment, a July raise, and then the two percent raise that is forthcoming to take effect in December. And that is what is going on in Virginia Cooperative Extension as a whole with that December date. I can give you a whole lot more detail about what we do and the impact we have on the community, if you would like it. We gave that presentation in the spring. We'll come back again next spring to talk about twenty twenty-three. I can just quickly mention that Cooperative Extension is a three-fold funding stream from the federal, the state, and the local. And your current funding is around thirty percent of that funding stream. This additional allocation will bring it to who I wrote it down, and now I don't know where I wrote it down. I believe it was thirty-two, it will bring it to thirty-two percent of our current budget with the state providing the bulk of the rest of that. I will also mention that our current return on investment, now this would have been for the previous fiscal year for Buckingham, for every dollar that you invest in our program, you get two dollars and ninety-two cents back in return. Our value of volunteer hours in the county is fifty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars. Do you have any questions or would you like more additional information?
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have a motion?
Pass it on to the Finance Committee, let them look at that, at the same time we look at the school budget.
Is that a motion?
It can be.
I second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Matthews and a second from Supervisor Gilliam to pass it on to the Finance Committee to look at, which is the Board's pleasure. Six, six unanimous, one absent. Now, we had your one call.
Yes, sir. This should be a pretty easy one, I hope. We've delayed this appointment for a few months now. I talked with Gerald Washington, and he's willing to serve as Buckingham's representative on the ASAP Board. With Mr. Washington's career in law enforcement, he brings us some specific knowledge to what will be of great value to ASAP Board with his work on roads and what would be a great value to ASAP Board with his, uh, work on roads and enforcement. So he has, when I talked to him, he was willing to accept it.
Board's pleasure.
Do I make a motion to report him?
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Bryant, second from Supervisor Allen. Wish the Board's pleasure. Unanimous, one absent. All right, County Attorney matters.
No matters tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. County Administrator report.
Yes, I got, uh, three quick things I want to bring to your attention. Uh, I'll mention number one, the solo committee has met one time, that's been brought up tonight, um, and as Mr. Dory said, it was a very productive committee meeting. It was one of our, I think, better meetings. We got a lot done that day. Um, we hope to bring back the policy to you guys in December, so you guys can vote on it and make any recommendations. Uh, so I thank Doc, Mr. Dory and, uh, Jacob L. as well for being on that committee and volunteering there. Also, this week, past weekend, the medical building in Dea went opened up, so as of today, they were taking patients and they had appointments, so-
Great.
That is a great news for the community, that we have a place now local that people can take advantage of. Um, they've invested a lot into that building. We went there this, this weekend. If you get a chance, please go in and take a look at it. They've done a great job on making that building look, or in this all-new equipment. Uh, the third thing I want to get your opinion on is comp plan. Uh, in the past, we've always, uh, let the planning commission make recommendations for the comp plan. They work on it for months, eighteen months, and they bring the whole finished product to the Board Supervisors. Thinking about maybe this year, doing something a little different, letting it maybe possible having the planning commission do sections as they were working on and bring those sections to you guys to work on, so it's not so much of a big bite to apple at one time, so you can work on each section at a time instead of working the whole comp plan at one time. So, want to get you guys' temperatures on that, and see if that's something you want to do, or leave it the way it is, or would you work on the whole plan at one time, or?
On the twentieth, we'll have all them surveys that's been taken, hopefully brought again. Please be able to find out if you think it will.
Supervisor Allen, I've received an email today from Lauren Jones with CRC, and she indicated that the results would not, uh, be ready until probably the December work.
Boy.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I support that idea because the next board is going to have a great big one-thousand-page document to try to go over. It's, I think, piecemeal, that, that makes sense to me.
Also gives, um, Nikki, you know, they freshly adopted one section in the planning commission to talk about it the following month with the Board Supervisors.
Right.
So it's not like you adopted something seventeen months ago, and then all of a sudden you're going to the Board Supervisors to look at it again.
That's fine.
For the Board, I'll take it, I mean, we're-
Sounds good, whatever you want to do, yeah.
So you want to bring back each section as they complete it with the planning commission reverse to the Board?
That'd be fine, to make it, more information we haven't given you at that time.
There you go.
But anyway, it'll be, it'll work out.
Okay, and that's what we're going to go to. We'll go to other board matters.
Mr. Carter, I've got a, a recommendation for the Southside Virginia Community College Board that, uh, to replace, uh, Donna Matthews with Cheryl Davis.
Back Community College, you said?
Ms. Matthews gave her resignation back earlier this year and, uh, just found someone to replace her, so.
I'm, I make a motion. You make a motion.
Yeah, that's a motion.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Wish the Board's pleasure.
And what was the name with the one you put in there?
Cheryl Davis.
Cheryl Davis.
Cheryl Davis, I think he said Cheryl. Longwood, yeah.
Board's pleasure. Unanimous, one absent. No executive closed session tonight. Anything else?
Been for a while.
Yeah, I think that will go home.
Let's go home, I adjourn.
Good job, Dennis.